All right, welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, our first six o'clock meeting of February. We're gonna have a prayer by Dr. Tisdale and a pledge allegiance by Mr. Nathan Barrett. Would you please stand?
Almighty Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Biloxi. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is in service for all Biloxians. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I need a motion to accept the motion on the agenda.
To move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second. Second by Ms. Newman. Any questions?
No.
If that been said, all in favor? Okay, six zero. Agenda accepted. Presentation, agenda, mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome everybody to... You know, it's carnival time, right? I wrote a song about it. I'm not gonna sing, but Susan's dancing back there, so... We welcome everybody here, and it is an exciting time for Biloxi and Gulf Coast. I think it's our 115th year to celebrate carnival here in Biloxi in front of City Hall. So that almost concludes my report, but I would like to ask to spread the minutes of the travel expense card to the minister. And right now, I'd like to call the Hunts and Hunt Tripp and Susan and Sherry to take over this great presentation.
We love it.
Courtney.
Use your outside voice.
My name is Martha Tripp, and I'm the chairperson of the annual Mardi Gras Shoebox Float Contest. My mother, Ruth Hunt, loved children. She and my dad, Walter Skeet Hunt, gave many years to the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. It was my mother's wish for children to have an active part in Mardi Gras. Some of her wishes came true as she began the Children's Marching Parade, which will be this Saturday, the 11th, and this tonight, the Shoebox Float Contest. My sister Susan Hunt and I will make sure these events continue. This is the 24th Annual Shoebox Float Contest, so we've been doing this for quite some time. The sponsors, I need to let you know, they are Berry's U-Pull-It Auto Parts, Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, Biloxi Public Schools, the City of Biloxi, Butch Ostlet Autoplex, Gulf Coast Carnival Association, David N. Harris Law Firm, the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum, Machada Potano P L L C, and Jennifer B. Schmidt of Keller Williams Realty. I'd like to thank Mr. Bill Raymond. He's the city historic administrator. And Sherry Bell over here, she's also the City of Biloxi's Recreation Director, for helping me tonight. Make sure after this presentation, the winners and your parents, you know you're going to the visitor center because you're gonna get honored there, and you're going to get... All the Shoebox Float winners will get a shirt like this, okay? So make sure you're there tonight to get your shirt. And you will have king cake and punch. And you also will be able to take your floats home with you that tonight, okay? Before honoring our winners, I also want to recognize Matthew Brooks. Where are you, Matthew? He is the president of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. Tina Ross Siemens, right over there, she's the executive director of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. Our captain, of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association, Keith Wade and his wife Rachel, were unable to make it tonight. So of course, Ms. Hunt, right there, is standing in for the captain tonight of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. And she's also president of the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. And Ms. Anna Harris, right here, she will be giving... She's the executive director of the Coastal Mardi Gras Museum. Today, each one of those people that I mentioned will give out the many awards the students will receive. We appreciate them supporting this event. Grades four, five, and six in the Biloxi Schools, Nativity, and Our Lady of Fatima were extended an invitation to participate. At each school, the art teacher or an assigned teacher was responsible for the contest. We could not have done this without them. Thank you, Ms. Cummings, Ms. DiMario, Ms. DeNoyian, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Hoxey, she's over there, which I'm proud she came, Ms. Smith and Ms. Thomas. So we appreciate all your help. Thank you. Is there anybody else here? Was there another art teacher? I might not have... Because we have two new art teachers that I've not seen. Okay. Each overall first place, second place, third place, and honorable mention float contest winners will receive today a cash award, a certificate, a set of its all-in-black-and-white doubloons, a 2023 free family pass to the Mardi Gras Museum, which is good for a whole year, okay? A set of beads from the Mardi Gras Museum like this, and then a set of beads from the Gulf Coast Carnival Association like this. We wanted to make sure they got every award we could give them, especially if it meant something for Mardi Gras. The students, when I was putting out their Shoebox Floats at the civic center, at the visitor center, the people were commenting on how great they were. And they are. All of them are very exceptional. It was kind of hard to come up with something black and white because we're so used to Mardi Gras having other kind of colors, you know? But it was great how they did their innovative work and made it work. So when you all, and tonight, don't forget, you get to take them home tonight with you. The cash awards are first place $30, second place $20, third place $10, and honorable mention $5. They also will have the opportunity to participate in the Children's Marching Parade. And hopefully, we're gonna have the fire truck. We're not sure. We'll know by Wednesday, but if not, we will have a flatbed trailer for them to ride on. And if you want to get extra throws for the children, you're more than welcome to get that. We'll have some extras on there. Hopefully, parents, you all brought your permission forms tonight. If you didn't, we'll get them, but we want them to be able to ride on that float, so you have to make sure you sign a permission for them to ride. Mayor Gillich will give out the winner each a certificate, right here. He will give out the certificates, and then... So Mayor Gillich, if... Where are you? You can get right here. That's your job.
Whatever you say.
All right, right there. And then Ms. Hunt, Ms. Hunt. Ms. Hunt's gonna give out the doubloons right here. And our Mr. Brooks, where are you? All right, you're right here by the mayor. You give out the money. And then, of course, we already have Ms. Anna Harris. She's gonna give out the bags, and in the bags are these, and the family pass for them to be able to go to the Mardi Gras Museum. And this is a new... This is something new that we've added this year. And I'm sure that's because Ms. Hunt wanted them to be able to see the Mardi Gras Museum. Okay, now I'm gonna... Hopefully, I'm going to announce the winners, and hopefully, I do not make a mistake on their names. But I did call the schools to try to get the name pronounced correctly, so I'll do the best. At the end, don't forget, y'all all need to come to the visitor center to get some cake and punch and their shirts. All right, last page here. Thanks again for all the organizations that helped us. And I hope I've got everybody checked off the show. Now, listen, after this is over, if you want to stay and find out what the city's doing, you're more than welcome to stay. If you don't, you're more than welcome to all get up and leave. And then, other people that want to stay will have a chance to sit. So now I will announce the winners for the 24th Annual Shoebox Float Contest. Please hold your applause until all the first-place winners are up here. And then, these people will go up there with them, and you all will be able to take a picture of everybody together, okay? So, Mr. Raymond, did anybody come in that I don't... Okay, all right. Bentley Burke, fourth grade, Back Bay. First, first. These are all first-place winners. Leah McMillan, fourth place, fourth grade, North Bay. These are all first-place winners. Skylar Bennett, fourth grade, Our Lady of Fatima. Quest Tanner, fourth grade, Pops Ferry. Eva Smith, fifth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. Eva also entered last year. So thank you, Eva, for entering two times. Tiara Weber, sixth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. Okay, now that's all our first-place winners. Let's give a big hand. Yeah, yes, I told them. All right. Would you all please get up there with these people so they can take a picture? Ms. Hunt? And parents, first, he's gonna take a picture. This man right here, he's... Then y'all come... Let me get out of the way. Okay, now, one more. I think they need to... I think they filed back and... That's it. They're just gonna stay out there and wait. All right, now we're gonna announce the second-place winners. Okay, Italia, I hope I get it right now, all right? Italia Batario Reyes, fourth grade, Back Bay. Lilian Alvarez, fourth grade, North Bay. Brody Kimmons, fourth grade, Pops Ferry. Ashley Ruiz, sixth grade, Upper Elementary. Ally Gruich, sixth grade, Nativity B V M. That's our second-place winners, so all y'all, please get back up, and now we can take a picture. Go get a picture. Yeah, yeah. Picture, okay, good. Yeah, y'all can come up. Come on up.
Hey, ready?
Come on up. All right, our third-place winners. Chloe Staling, fourth grade, Back Bay. Lucy Kavanaugh, fourth grade, Nativity B V M. Chase Rayner, fourth grade, North Bay. Elizabeth Pollan, Pops Ferry, fourth grade. David Banish, fifth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. And Morgan Patty, sixth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. Big hand, round of applause. Yeah, they fall out. He's all fell out. One more, we got honorable mention. And we have... Now we have the honorable mentions. We have Bella Bayous, fifth grade, Upper Elementary. A.J. Codella, sixth grade, Nativity B V M. Now you can give a big round of applause. Picture.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martha. Thank you, Ms. Susan Hunt. All right, all right. All righter. All right, I think we're gonna go ahead and resume our meeting. Again, thank you guys for sharing that experience with our kids and with our youth. All right, Mayor, we've spreaded the minutes. Anything else, Mayor?
That's it. End of report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna move right along. I don't see any department reports. I'm gonna start to my end with the council report. Mr. Barrett?
I have no report.
No report? Okay, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Creel for some assistance, particularly on the removal of a dead deer on Hickman Road. I also appreciate your continuing diligence on some issues regarding the use of Hickman and on Old Highway 67. I know those are moving along, you know, pretty good. Also appreciate your assistance on, I mean, several things. So over in the... Off of Brody Brazier Road, there's a development. The developer's trying to get to Phase Two, and he had a situation that needed to be clarified. He expresses his thanks for you contacting him on that issue as well. Also, to the administration, and appreciate Charles' assistance with Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher is in the new part of Ward Six off Old Highway 67 as well. And he had some concerns. He has water, but he doesn't have sewer, and he just needed a timeline on when services would be invested in that area so he can make a decision to develop his property as well. Just shout out, I know it's probably gonna be on his report, but Mr. Gans, the Biloxi Bombers over there in your ward, that is a great sign of community involvement with the city. And I'll let you kind of talk more in depth of it, but hats off to the Biloxi Bombers, and I'm looking forward to listening to the rest of your report on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Dr. Tisdale?
Thank you, Mr. Gans. Legislative bills rolling out, some of them are interesting. A 5% increase possibly in the employer's contribution to PERS. Are we... We have a number for that yet on our end, or?
It could be. It could be about $2 million.
Yeah, okay. That'd be... And that's not just Biloxi, that's...
Well, it's a long stretch, but you know, in... This is my personal opinion. You know, in the middle of the time that the state is flush with a lot of things, timing is everything, and it'll be interesting to see how it turns out at this point in time.
Okay, that's good. So it's on your radar. Appreciate that. Also, I've scheduled a neighborhood meeting for tomorrow night at 5:00 at the Snyder Center. This deals with the Kiesler Federal Credit Union's plans for expansions. At the planning... Last week's Planning Commission meeting, there was a rezoning that was recommended by the Planning Commission. That'll be coming to the council in the near future. So that's tomorrow at the Snyder Center at 5:00. If you're interested and want to sit down, I want to thank Mr. Creel. At the last minute, I said, "You're invited." He said, "I'll be there." Then when I told him what it was about, he said... No, he said he'd be there. Thank you, Jerry, for that. Also, I'd make an observation going to all these Planning Commission meetings. We need some more microphones than what we have for the Planning Commission. I mean, they're fighting over, I don't know, two or three microphones, and that's it. And the poor stenographer sometimes when he gets heated. So they could use some more microphones over there. And I wanted to ask about that water fountain at Pennzoil Park.
We're drilling. We're drilling for water, see if we can...
Drill, baby drill. Seriously, five grand will solve that issue, plus whatever it costs to run a water line over there. Not asking for a splash pad, not asking for a decorative fountain. What a basic human need, agua. That concludes my comments and reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Demme?
Ms. Labata, I saw you walk in just in time. We took the tour of the ward, and I was just wanting to see if we've gotten any work orders or anything going on any of the areas that we looked at.
Yes, we are actually working on getting these work orders put in. Oh, I just heard some put in to do the paving, some of the drainage workers put in.
Right. Okay, do we have the sinkhole areas on...
We have a sinkhole in middle flight. I just got the quote... I just got the quote on it yesterday.
Working on that purchase order. As far as your other... There's a sinkhole, I think, in Caroline. We haven't gotten a quote on that yet. Campbell Drive, they're supposed to go back out there, depending on the weather, tomorrow.
Okay.
So pretty much, the big stuff is all in the works. Some of the smaller things, we've still gotta get to, but it's moving.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing to prove.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Ms. Newman? Your report. And Mr. Lawrence?
We have the bids on the fences, the St. Mary's Park, Savara, and also Gruic Center. What we have to do now, we have the bids in.
Fence, Sherry? Is Sherry here? The fence and the purchase orders for the fence and estimates, what's the... Yeah, so we're gonna move with that. Can't beat the fence, is that what's... What was the company that we thought was... Okay, thanks, Sherry.
So there's an action to have this done.
Yeah.
The next thing is the concession stand or the bathroom at Pickleball Court. Where we stand with that? Do we have a number for that to work on?
Yeah, I think, Christie, the specs for the pickleball locker room and that situation, we'd estimate $200,000 or something, I think.
So we have the plans and the specs now, and we're getting them all packaged together with our city front-end documents to put them out to bid. So we should get them out to bid probably in the next week or two.
Thank you for that. The other thing, the pay raises, will they all go into effect in February now?
It's already in effect right now.
Did we miss January?
Missed January.
I just wanted to make sure.
Fourth, I think, is when it...
Payroll in February.
Yeah, first payroll in February.
In February. On the Swettman House, what do we have with the Swettman House? I'm getting a lot of phone calls. They said that we're gonna sell it, and somebody's gonna turn it into a home, which is great. And the people around it are buying lots so they can build more homes that keeps it a residence. So where we stand. Y'all are getting phone calls from different people. I knew someone had done it's done. Is it done yet? What did you say last time?
Last time you said, "When's RFP going out?" And I said, "Two weeks," and that was two weeks ago, so we should have it out this week.
All right. We should hear something back pretty quick, I hope.
Yeah, we want to make sure we get somebody that wants to do something good with it, that wants to turn it into a home. And yeah, I'm like you, we've got at least two or three interested parties that want to make residences.
Okay, that's good. The only thing we have left is the children parade. It's Saturday, 11:00. So kids love it. I think what they did with the Shoebox Derby. Like Felix and I were talking, and I think that's great. You made a bunch of kids happy. Get them... They was all excited being up here, getting that picture taken. That's a good thing. That's what Mardi Gras is all about, everybody having a good time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, George. Amen. And I have a few comments. First, I want to send our condolences and I love to Brother George and his loss of his brother, so...
Thank you.
You have our prayer. You're in our prayers. I wanted to just expound on what Kenny said, Nick Moody and Bubba Hall taking a very big interest, even starting a league, a travel team baseball, waking up some of our parks. They've teamed up also with the Shuckers in the City of Biloxi, Ms. Sherry Bell, and working with us in waking up our community, getting kids out there playing and having them to exercise. So I want to thank them for what they're doing. And last but not least, I would be having a ward meeting in March, March 14th. Gonna wait till after Mardi Gras, and we're gonna visit with all our people in our ward. That concludes my report. I'm gonna move... We're gonna move on to our public agenda. We have citizen comments with a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Three minutes per person, and it will be... Three minutes per person, and it will be strictly, strictly enforced, okay? Is there anyone on my left would like to come up and make comments? Anyone on my left? Oh, it's, I'm sorry, it's going to be at the Civic Center, I'm sorry. The 14th on this, at the Civic Center. Civic Center, 5:30, 5:30. 5:30, thank you. Okay, anyone on my left like to make any comments? Okay, anyone on my right? Anyone in the back? All right, Mr. George, George Parks, please sign in.
Good afternoon. My name is George Parks and I live at 174 Hannibal Court, part of the St. Paul subdivision, the home of Doris Bush Park. I came to speak to the council to let you all know that the ones that live in Hannibal, the people that lived in Hannibal Court are very, very pleased that the gate is locked right as you go in from our circle. Because during the summertime, our house be locked in when people are having a function. Now that that gate is locked, they could use the other gates and we are free to go in and out of our houses. We thank you all for having that done so that we don't have to worry about trying to get in and out of our houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Is there anyone else I missed? Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, citizen comments are closed. We're going to move on to our policy agenda. Ordinance number A, first reading.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to the Architectural and Historical Review Commission.
Need a motion on that? Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. That is the first reading. We're going to move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for three parcels of land from neighborhood business to community business for property at 226 Tuxedo Street.
Need a motion on that? Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale, and I assume that is the first reading also. Okay, we're going to move on to policy agenda C.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for approximately 2.6 acres from RM 30 multifamily high-density to plan development and field district master plan for an unaddressed parcel of land running upon Maple Street.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale, and that also is our first reading. Okay, ordinance number D.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for 156 Camellia Street and 918 Southern Avenue from RS5 residential, single-family, high-density to community business for 156 Camellia and neighborhood business for 918, 1918 Southern Avenue.
That is our second reading, and it was moved by Ms. Newman and second by Mr. Barrett. Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Barrett, any com-?
This is the, the former Trinity Church location at the corner of Camellia and Southern Avenue. What it is, Mr. Steerman, who is a very successful businessman in New Orleans, is moving part of his operation here to Biloxi. They want to turn that old church into an event center. He would have places in the sanctuary for events. He would also be moving his offices into the back part of the building. The property is zoned correct, it's, the zoning change is needed to accomplish what he wants to do. The church part, there's two pieces to this request. The part that the church is owned would be changed to, the request is to change it to CB because that's where the events would be held. And then across the street on the north side of Southern, there's an area there that is already a parking lot. And what we would recommend is that that would be changed to NB because there are some houses around the, the parking area. But we think this is a very good request, a very good use for that piece of property.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Have none. Anyone else? Any comment? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, the kind of events, what are you going to do inside the church? Oh, the building, you're going to do now. You said an event center.
Like wedding receptions, weddings, those kind of things, family reunions?
Any other options other than that? If that don't work, what else they can do?
Well, Mr. Steerman, I think is here. If you want to, he, I'm sure he would be able to come up if you want to ask him what he would do in the event that it didn't work out.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the next option.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Jason Steerman, the owner of Coastal Development Group and the applicant. So as far as what kind of uses we're expecting, we're thinking like Mr. Creel said, weddings, receptions. We've got some short-term rental apartments planned in what used to be the school part. And we're kind of envisioning, like, imagine if you had a wedding with people from out of town. Certain people could stay there in the, in the rental units and then, you know, do your rehearsal dinner in the hall, do your wedding in the hall, and then move the chairs around and do your reception in the hall. We're also thinking like Mardi Gras balls. We're hoping to bring some gospel music events to kind of talk to the history of Mississippi and of course, the birth of music, starting with gospel into Elvis and rock and roll and all of that. So that's pretty much our thing. We're not planning on having any food facilities. We're not going to, we're not going to do any food preparation there. We're not going to have, we're not planning on applying for a liquor license. Anything that anybody would want to bring there, we would bring outside approved vendors. And we've already been having conversations with the Development Review Committee, and we've been offered assistance from the fire department and health and things like that. But we're not, we're not planning on like a restaurant or anything like that in there. We will be able to, people will be able to serve food if like an outside vendor brings it in. But we're not planning on any of that actually happening.
How many rooms do you have set up for short-term rental?
Six.
Six of them?
Yes, sir.
So we'd have...
And that, that's in the draw, the drawing is actually in this package.
Yeah, because this was all part of the neighborhood, so I was just trying to, so that's the conditional use, Jerry, is for the short-term rentals?
I'm across the street from Treasure Bay.
Yeah.
It's to orient everybody and like next to Waffle House. It's, it should be, it probably should have been zoned that way a long time ago. The church has been occupying that space for 70 years before they basically shut everything down when I acquired the building from the church members. And they, just to give you guys a little bit of background, they actually intentionally sold it to me because of what I planned to do with the building and that I wasn't going to come and just knock it over. So I'm trying to maintain the integrity of the building and, and tell the story of the building. And like Mr. Creel said, I've done a lot of historic restoration work in the Vucaree. I've won awards over there. We've been in all kinds of media with some of the work that we've done in New Orleans. I'm very good at saving old ugly buildings and making them nice again.
And it'll be on the tax rolls too, so.
It'll be back in commerce, yes, sir. That's correct. Across, I, I share borders with community business on, I think, three sides. And there's even like an HVAC company that's been in business across the street for like 40 years, and he's in a residential zone. Nobody is just ever worried about it because the church has been in there since like 1954, I believe. So it probably should have changed a long time ago, to be honest with you. Just, there was never any, any need for it because churches get to do what they want.
I get.
So I think it'll be good for the city, it'll be good for us, and it'll also be good for all the businesses around there. There's a lot of restaurants and things I'm going to be bringing a lot of traffic to. So I appreciate your time and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, so the church itself, which is, is that current, I don't know what the current zoning is.
RS5. RS5.
RS5. But churches, I recall you saying, Jerry, that churches can be in any zone. And the church itself is what's being rezoned as a community business. Right, which is allow short-term rentals by right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I'm going to call for a question. All in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, resolution E?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a medical cannabis dispensary at 941 Diaz Avenue.
Need a motion on it?
I'm moving for discussion.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
The biggest problem I have with this is where it's located at. When you come off the interstate, down ramp, that's the first thing you're going to see. The welcome sign, "Welcome to Biloxi," the Quonix Club, and Cannabis Club. I mean, that's just the toughest spot to put something like that. We don't want our town to be known as that. We're a unique town, a lot of great things going on in the city of Biloxi. That's my problem is we're just located to be in the wrong spot. And when you're on the down ramp in Biloxi, first house you see is the Belvins House. And that's where you're going to put this cannabis. And that's the problem I have with it. Just don't want that image. That's all you see when you're driving in the city of Biloxi. That's my problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Jerry, I know, I know that area is low and you may not be the person to ask, but I'm, I'm thinking as low as that is, not, I don't think you're going to get any water damage from high tides. But anytime you have a moderate hurricane, much less a really bad hurricane, correct me if I'm wrong, George, all that area floods because it's right there by Keegan, Keegan's Bio. And I don't know what the requirements are under those circumstances for a cannabis dispensary. I don't know how they secure that, or I don't know how all that works.
Well, there's nothing in the Section 19 of the cannabis law for the state that would address that. You know, if it's a question of elevating the structure, if they're not proposing to make any changes to the, the structure, then they would not have to elevate it. They do have an upstairs that they said was going to remain vacant, would be for storage. It's a two-story building. And, but the cannabis law was basically written to make sure that a lot of attention is not drawn to these places. You know, you can't have neon lights and those kind of things. That it, the building basically is kind of nondescript, the sign is basically nondescript. The only people that are coming there are people who have the card and have the ability to get in. It's not one of those places where people are going to be hanging around the outside of the building. They'll come there to get their product and then they'll leave, so.
Right, and there, as I recall, may not be accurate, but I recall there being two other residences just to the south of that.
On the, the road that runs beside the ramp, yes, sir.
Yeah.
The pawn shop is across the street.
Correct.
And down the road beside the pawn shop, there are a couple of residences.
That's an else, you pull off Bayview, kind of to a side street. I think the city has some storage under the I-110 connector there.
Yes, sir.
And you've got, I think, another one or two more structures there, but that's...
On Diaz behind.
On Diaz, and that's, that's all, all of that is zoned waterfront?
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
So we had another one of these that we, that was near a major casino and ballpark and sort of in a tourism corridor. And, and we had some pause, you know, about that one, and, and we actually, I don't think we voted for it. And this one strikes me as similar, like George Lawrence said, Councilman Lawrence. You come off the interstate, down this waterfront, near this waterfront zoning where we have major casino operations. And, you know, I, I don't, I, I take a little bit of pause too if that's what we're, I think that's one of the reasons because of the compatibility with the tourism area and a family, I know the ballpark was more of a family entertainment. This is kind of parallels that a little bit. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I need a little bit more information till I can give it a yes vote. So if we voted for it today, I'd probably side with Councilman Lawrence on this one.
Just for your information, the applicant is in the audience in case y'all had questions for her.
I'd love to hear from them, you know, and just, you know, listen to what their vision is.
Thank you. I can, I can understand that, the concern to get off at Biloxi, which is a beautiful city, just to see a marijuana sign, but it's not that type of feel. It's more of a doctor's office feel. And also, if you look at what's on Diaz Street now, my aspirations of wanting to turn it around is to bring value, excuse me, is to bring value to the area and to increase the real estate over there just because that particular block is an eyesore. And even though it's zoned waterfront, it's not actually on the water. The, the homeowner who's actually selling me, where I have a contract on the house, they're actually here as well. And they would attest, even the, the other person who owns the land, in 75 years, nobody had any aspirations to do anything with that block, and it's actually declining. So if there's any future for Diaz Street, in my opinion, it's going to be zoned commercial. And the signage is not going to show a marijuana leaf. It's more of a doctor's office type atmosphere.
Okay, you're finished, Mr. Glavine? Okay, Mr. Demme?
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I, I haven't been able to download the PDF that's attached to the agenda. I wasn't able to download it on my phone. I haven't been able to download it here. Do you have any, any visuals of what any of it's going to look like?
Sure. You want me to hand it to you?
Yeah. Right there? I don't know if that complies with the state law, but...
Sir, sir.
Got to get your microphone.
Speaking to the mic.
You know, anybody that goes to these facilities, they actually have a medical card. And before they get that medical card, they actually have to go see a physician. So this isn't going to be a smoke shop and, you know, try to get that, you know, I understand your concern.
I don't know, Jerry, have you or even Peter looked at any of the new legislation? I'm not sure if it's passed or if it's pending. But there is some legislation that helps circumvent all of these steps that people have to go through. There's also a bill that is going to allow people, I, if I'm, want to research this. I just was reading through bills, and I think there's one that actually allows people to enter the dispensaries now without a medical card to buy topicals. They could be THC topicals, but they wouldn't be allowed to buy flower or vapes or edibles, things like that. But, and so if this bill passes, then it won't just be people with medical cards that are allowed to enter into it. If the bill hasn't already passed, I'm not sure. But that's just something we want to look at as we start debating what we do with zoning for cannabis facilities. Thank you.
You're done, Mr. Demme?
I am done. Did anyone want to look at this?
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, you have one more question?
Yeah, don't you have, do you have two of these in Pass Christian?
No, my mother does, not me.
Are they open?
Yes.
Both of them?
Just one of them in Bay St. Louis right now. And I can tell you that, you know, we have just done the medical cards. I don't, no aspirations of the CBDs and the gummies because, you know, I, I can respect the area and respect the waterfront and the clientele that this has attracted. You would be very surprised.
Well, the waterfront has nothing to do with you. That would, August Parker did that a few years ago trying to do it for a casino. And they couldn't do it because the casinos can't be on the other side of the interstate. So that was, had nothing to do with, the waterfront just ate, they took an whole eight acres. So that's part of where the Belvins lived at. And it was always residential. Only thing behind them on the bayou is they have a junkyard on the back end of it, you know? So that, that, but that's always been just residential neighborhood. And that's another problem I have was I didn't want that stuff like that inside the residential neighborhood. I know it's zoned waterfront, you know, so that's not your fault. Nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I would say that, that particular street, though, that particular street, you have a bridge, and then you really get to the homes. So, and then on the other side, it's, it's under the interstate. You know, you don't, it's not really, that particular street, it's, the future of it is going to be commercial, especially when you have right across the street is a pawn shop, you know, that, that is abandoned. You know, those particular, you know, similarly located as this 941 Diaz. You know, when you look at the view and the location, it's going to be commercial. And again, you know, it's gonna have a, a doctor's office feel, very professional. And a renovation that's not gonna be an eyesore, it's gonna bring value to the particular area.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I have, uh, one question for Mr. Creel.
Mr. Pepe?
I, I usually like to kind of, uh, look at what the planning commission did and the things that they considered. What was, what was their vote and what was their vote like?
Fourteen to zero to approve.
Fourteen to zero to approve? So it was pretty much unanimous?
Even, even Mr. Parker across the street voted to approve it, so.
Okay.
Even Mr. Parker, what?
Even Mr. Parker voted to approve it.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah, we know that, they own a lot of property across the street. Where you think the pawn shop come from?
Okay, well, okay, well, that concludes, uh, my comments. We can't, and I apologize, we can't, uh, take, take any comments from the audience unless you're called up by a, a member. Okay, well, I guess we're ready to call for the question. All in favor? All in favor? All against? Three, three-three deadlock, so. Can't pass that. Okay, that's it with that one. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion on the consent agenda.
They'll move second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think we have some good things on there. M and N has, uh, offered a new, uh, Rouse's that they set up with the SMPD. That's why we stepped in and helping them to make sure we get this, uh, grocery store.
Don't worry, I mean, it really is, it, it was a direct catalyst. What, what happened was a commitment to attract this Rouse's, which is, uh, you know, pretty strong, uh, uh, grocery operation. Sixty-something stores across the country. I think this will actually be the biggest i- in their chain. But again, the extension of Pops Ferry Road really was one of the linchpins. SMPDD was, was, uh, like, we had approved a, a similar situation, but this is based, the incentive is based on how much they sell. And the diversion, I believe, is eighty-five for the first year, seventy, uh, eighty, eighty and seventy-five, till the five million is paid back. So I mean, it's a, it is, really is a no-brainer. And there will be some additional things, we can't talk about it now, but there'll be some additional development i- in that, uh, in that footprint.
I, I think it's great 'cause, uh, when we lost that grocery store, it really hurt. Them coming back is a good thing for the city of Biloxi. And they're also gonna change the shopping center itself and upgrade it to different things.
Out parcels development.
Yes, sir.
When are they actually gonna try to open up the grocery store?
It'll be in twenty-twenty-four when they open it, um, and that language is, is in there. They have a deadline for-
They're still working on it now. Demolition's taking place and some of the foundation work is going on right now. But there, there, might add too for the TV land, and there's about thirteen to fourteen million dollars worth of actually, uh, construction going into the ground and that's gonna reflect in, in the abhorrent taxes. This is purely, what you're asking, what we're asking tonight is purely sales tax and it's driven by how much business they're gonna do. And we, we look forward to the amount of business they do.
And it's new sales tax too. It's a sales tax that they're gonna generate that's gonna turn around and pay back the-
It's gonna be, they probably the hottest grocery store around it right now. Everything they open up just really takes off.
I wanna congratulate Jerry and, and his work over the last two years, I think, uh, and, and of course the developers too. They, they were very creative in, in SMPDD. I mean, it really was, you know, a, a village effort. And, uh, uh, I think, uh, within, you know, months, it'd be a lot more excitement, exciting things happen in that corridor. But I push, again, I pushed our number one priority is to get that extension completed, bid, and driving on it and other things that will happen, I'm convinced one-hundred percent. But that Rouse's was a bit, was the anchor store.
It's a, it's already spurring some additional development around the area. Got a call today from a developer that because of the Rouse's going in, has acquired a piece of property on the south side of Pass Road that's wanting to build a new restaurant there.
I just think it's a great thing and I'm glad we all stepped up. Everybody in council have been waiting for something like this to happen. And this is a good move for the city of Biloxi. Is there anything else I had?
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
And, uh, the CC with Danny Patala, we just, that's the same contract we've been having with him.
I think so.
Yeah.
On the Gone Float Tournament?
On the dock, yeah. See.
That's his, that's his annual, uh, tournament, same deal that we've always done. All we do is give him a, he signs an agreement with us and we just give him some barricades and a stage. And he has a tournament and he's been doing it for years, same deal.
He's been doing a good job. That's, that's a big tournament, that's a good thing. When all these adopter road and this, what did they actually do? Somebody takes it over?
Upgrade the area that they are adopting and, you know, uh, cleaning it up, maintaining it, painting, uh, just dressing it up.
We, we, we get approached a lot of times about somebody that wants to help, wants to adopt an area or park, just like the Todd Miguez Park. And we don't really have anything in place to allow them to do it to where we sort of are able to monitor who's doing that. The county has a beautification program. State Highway has a, has sort of an adopting area. So we just looked at some other cities and sort of incorporated what they were doing. And, uh, if a business wants to dress up out in front of their, their business, but it's in the city right away, we just, that way we're able to document what's going where.
The reason I asked that because that group wanted to take over Savara Park and clean it up for the little league that, 'cause you know, with AJ Holloway Park being under construction, they're not gonna have a lot of places to practice. You're gonna lose all them peoples out there, so it's like a bunch wants to do this. So who did you have to approach, Cherry Bell or y'all?
I think we had for the parks, they'd approach, um, uh, the Parks Department, Cherry Bell. For the roadways, uh, for the common areas, yeah, I think some of those might be Jerry Creel with Community Development.
What they really wanted to do, probably take the little baseball field, turn it back into a baseball field. That's fenced in, that's Savara Park, that part. You know, so they could practice with the kids and stuff like that.
Yeah, any sort of major thing like that, we probably still would take that back to the council. If somebody was gonna build a new field or something like that.
Yeah, this one here is already there. They just put it back as a little baseball field. So I just thought that, since you had all these other, but I just, had, I had a couple of phone calls of that, so. Just to make sure they do it right so they can take it over. It's like Todd Miguez, they're doing the same thing, they put it all back together.
Yep.
That's good, all right, thank you.
That's it, George?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Newman? Mr. Demme? Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, going back to Rouse's on, um, item N, M, uh, I think, Peter, the AEG opinion is quoted that based, I think for the purpose of establishing a redevelopment, um, program like we're talking about. It also mentions, uh, for the revitalization of blighted areas. Do I recall correctly that we did declare, I think, the old Walmart?
We did.
That was blighted. Was, was this, was this commercial area included as well? I couldn't remember and I'm just wondering if that might be a stumbling block or is that a T we need to cross or an I to dot?
No, I think the, um, whether we specifically put this property into that redevelopment area, I think what we've done is, is fine, but I'll verify that.
Okay.
But I think, um, the, the AEG opinion just talks about in general, we can declare something a redevelopment program, which we're sort of doing by this resolution.
Okay, just looking at that, that caught my attention. On, um, on the example that was given for Rouse's sales, uh, on item N, this is the, the breakdown, the years, the percentages and all that stuff. They use for, for purposes, example purposes, that the sales, if they were thirty million. They also mention, uh, commercial redevelopment program application by X, what is it, X-Three Tango, I think?
Developer, yeah.
And is, is that how much, does that thirty million, is that high, low, do we know? Is it about what they anticipate is my only question?
Concern, that was a, we felt that that was a conservative estimate of what they project to do at that location.
Right, and not only the sales tax there, you know, any additional sales tax too from other out parcel development would be part of that figure too. It's not there now.
Right.
If the out parcels are developed in, um, no, but it's gonna generate our, you know, a, a better sales tax figure, not related to this. But I mean, that, the offset, uh, with the abhorrent taxing and, you know, actually the uplifting of the value, abhorrent tax value, as well as the development of out parcels that will be generating the sales tax. I mean, it wouldn't happen except for this. But this, this deal is related to their sales and actually about a hundred K per year is developed. SMPDD is gonna interact with, to, to manage it and, and making sure that, that that's a distribution. And a big part of the, I think, the success is how we would actually do the distribution. Instead of an annual situation, we do it every three months on a quarter basis. So I mean, it was a, a kind of a creative, uh, solution, uh, to make everybody, uh, you know, happy on, on the deal.
I, I applaud the, the solution, it is pretty creative.
I'll just add that, you know, what their actual sales are, that's, that's a company type trade secret. But we felt, uh, in general, this is, this is listed as an example of what could happen. If their sales are less, they may not get the full five million credit. If their sales are more, they'll get paid faster, so.
Might this be a good model for maybe a smaller grocery chain if we're trying to lure, um, grocery stores into East Biloxi?
Yes, and it's been worked on now.
Thinking this is a pretty cool idea.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, let's see, I do have a couple of other items. I noticed we're moving a hundred and nineteen thousand from salaries and wages in the engineering department to professional services. Are we moving that amount? Thank you, Jerry. Are we moving that particular amount for, for something in particular, some things in particular?
Just salaries.
I know, but we're moving it from, from salaries and so, okay, so you're talking about-
Fractal services.
Right, what kind of, what kind of services are we looking at for a hundred?
Bodies.
Okay, so just to get work done, is that accurate? Okay, um, on item L, uh, apparently we budgeted, uh, ten thousand dollars for the Greater Biloxi Economic Development Foundation in this fiscal year? Correct?
That's right, this is their request to, uh, to receive that. They're working on the, um, some different projects in downtown. One of them is administering the, uh, the Bark Building Grant and there's some other studies. We have another study that we're looking for.
I just couldn't recall what it was, thank you. Item P? On item P is we're getting a, a check for P.
P is in Papa.
For Pablo, P is in Pablo.
That's, that's right. That's our semi-annual dump of infrastructure.
That's correct, this is from the, the online sales tax.
Right, yeah, right.
Correct, okay.
Recognizing, recognizing that revenue.
Right, and, and this, and then this, these buy semi-annual checks. I gotta get the buy and the semi right. Semi-annual checks, they appear to be going up a little each year. And my understanding is we've got, we gotta be sure to spend it. So our, our, what comes to us in the, in the next year is actually spent. The legislature wants you to spend this money.
And I think there's some activity to be, uh, for the cities, municipalities be treated just like the counties too, which would kind of give us more flexibility on how we stack up things and how we use things in a multi-year situation.
Just wondering if that water fountain in Pennzoil Park would qualify?
Part of it, part of it, it's part of it, infrastructure.
Adopt a park.
Adopt a park. All right, item-
Clean water related.
Item Q is, is the last one I have. And, um, we're authorizing a submission of an amended tidlance grant. This is for Parker's Creek dredging and it's for less money. And anytime something changes, you always have to go back through the process. So if it's, uh, less money, what are we not gonna do that we wanted to do?
Not dredge as much.
Not, not dredge as deep, three inches less or whatever. That's, but that's basically it, it's just for that site.
I think there's still sufficient money in that project to do what we need.
Okay.
That, that was a, the gift that came from, uh, we didn't ask for, that tidlance grant. Sometimes we get a tidlance grant we didn't ask for.
Anytime dredging money's available, we want that gift, I think we want.
And then, and then they amended it, they, they amended, they took some of it back. So we had to submit an amendment grant.
Right, and they've done that for a number of projects.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Lot of back and forth.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mike.
I think Mr. Tisdale covered all the wards and a little bit of the county, so, uh, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Um, BB goes along with Q, is that correct? Seymour Engineering on that Parker's Creek?
Correct.
And we did, we did request that. I asked for that, um, that funding for that to be dredged.
Who'd you ask?
Casey Ury.
Okay.
Write that down.
Not the normal route. We'll take it.
Yeah, um, on, um, item U, the Shriners Boulevard Water Sewer Extension, uh, they're, they've started putting up the silt fence and stuff to start that. And so I've had several people call, ask questions. The people that are on the other side of the road are asking about accessibility to water sewer. So what's gonna be the, um, the, the process of that? Are we gonna be able to cross Shriners with that, um, water sewer? Because there are people that are asking about that. I guess some, some of the people that live, live, um, up there have stopped and asked the workers what they're doing. And so I started getting messages, uh, last week on that.
Um, usually on a big high, I, I actually don't think there's services running underneath the highway now. But I'll go back and double check. But we can look at adding, boring some services underneath the road to get to the other side.
And most of those homes are grouped, um, you know, you don't have, they're, they're grouped. So you don't have like huge spreads. So just maybe, um, a couple, two or three, um, spots we, we could go under. But it would be better to do it, look at doing that during the project and to, and, and instead of waiting until-
It might be, it might be in there. This was designed while I was gone, so I'm, I don't have it all in my head, but, um, but if it's not-
Probably cost more to do it after the fact than doing it while the project's going on. So if we can look and see if that's in there, if not, look and see if we can get that added to it. And I believe that's, um, that's, oh, the, um, Z, they have started doing the surveying. That's for the Lorain Road, Boyet, Shorecrest, uh, Water Sewer. They, they've been out there doing all the surveying for that. So, um, hopefully they get us that design back on that pretty soon. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I have none either. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question, all in favor? Seven, zero, any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Newman, Mr. Demme, Dr. Tisdale, Glavine, Barrett?
None.
Okay, seven, oh. Okay, code enforcement hearing.
Okay. Item A, War Properties LLC, Zero Bayview Avenue, that case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I need a motion on the routine agenda?
They'll move.
Moved by Ms., Dr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Lawrence?
Good evening, counsel. Currently, Mema is working on our next one point nine five million dollars.
And you should receive that when?
It's not in the system yet, um, so we'll be sending out an email to them tomorrow to see when it'll get into their, uh, Mississippi PA website. Uh, so I hope to give you an update at the next council and get something definitive to you.
So we're pretty much ahead of the curve?
Yes, sir, sixty days.
Thank you.
Weak construction. Yes, sir. It was a weak construction.
Say it again?
Weak, you know, not as much work has been done in this past month. So we still, the funds are still there available when they actually do the work. We're still sixty days ahead.
Way to go, Walt Junior.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Dr. Tisdale?
None.
No one else? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Seven, zero, and it, motion carries and need a motion to-
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to close in memory of, uh, George's brother, Henry-